If you didn't hear what Tanya said, we are now live on our two cable providers, but we are not on Verizon Live or YouTube Live. We'll have to tape this and reload it on that, so it may not be available until tomorrow. Nevertheless, we're ready to go.
All right, let's go. Begin this work session, and the city manager, David, we're going to take care of this for us, right?
Yes, sir. I'm helping Gretchen.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Members of council, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this evening. As you may recall, you allocated some money a couple of years ago in September of 2021 to help us move towards establishing permanent restroom facilities out at South Lawson Park. And there, as the staff memo noted, COVID supply chain and other things have complicated that issue. And what Dave and Gretchen will present to you this evening is our recommendation on how to move forward to essentially achieve our goal, which is to have appropriate and adequate bathroom facilities at South Lawson Park to replace the one, sometimes two, porta-johns that we have there now. And in doing so, in a manner that's just similar to how they've addressed this issue at the middle school, at essentially the high school football field. And we'll be glad to answer any questions, of course. And if there are a few minutes remaining after this, we can give you a brief update on some of the other Parks and Recreation related things that are either ongoing or about to kick off. With that, Dave, Gretchen, please walk us through your report.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Staff's very pleased to be here with you this evening to talk about South Lawson Park and some of the really exciting things that are currently happening, as the manager referenced. But in particular, first and foremost, to discuss the South Lawson restroom project, I'm going to ask Gretchen to go over the particulars of it. But as Randy referenced, the project began one way, but with some challenges from the pandemic and the associated issues. We've actually looked for other alternatives, and one in particular, that we feel, with your consideration, will meet the criteria of a permanent restroom, albeit perhaps not a brick and mortar at this time. And with that, I'm going to ask Gretchen to walk you through the PowerPoint. We're very pleased to answer any questions as we go, at your discretion. Gretchen?
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for joining us and being with us this evening for work session. I echo the things that Dave said as well. We have explored a number of possibilities that could be at South Lawson Park. And in order to achieve a project within budget, which is the current $190,000 that has been appropriated, we make some recommendations this evening. As a result of the changing marketplace that all of us are living in, we've definitely seen an increase in the cost of labor if we were to use a prefabricated delivery structure, much like State Park's use. We would also have seen dramatic increases in you all as well in your day-to-day life, too, for the cost of raw materials, building materials, and things like that. And then, as we explored the possibility to do a design with an architectural bid and then further put that bid on the street, just the cost for the architecture jumped significantly to take a large portion of the project allotment. So with that being said, some of the things that we get from the modular piece, which I guess a good way to explain it would be like a Clayton home, that's on a standard foundation from that point on, so it would be permanent. Some of the advantages that we get, we can realize in cost savings as well. In addition, with the unit that we would recommend, of course, everything would be ADA compliant. It does meet the building code and would be raised significantly in a manner to achieve the proper height to suit the building code and the building inspector's requirements. Our price that we've been able to negotiate through a state contract includes all site prep work, installation, moving, and hurricane strapping for permanency. And the most important part that starts to raise the price for projects like this are stamped in engineered plans, and those all come with the actual unit. Typically, a unit such as this, and a good example that we can reference is something that you may see that was part of the Learning Cottage process through that the school board installed. They used a bathroom modular concept, and it is still on site. It isn't to the exact specifications that we're looking at, but it is similar, and it is currently also in use at the stadium for men's and women's restrooms. Each one of those units there only serves one side, like a men's unit that's modular or a women's unit that's modular. This unit that we're proposing would actually have a ramp that has two service doors and so on. So just to give you an overview, if you've been to the stadium, turf field lately, and you've had to use the restroom instead of going into the middle school, those are the facilities that are in use there now at this time. The projection is a modular unit. It would be about 12 by 39 when you include the extra three feet for the towing capacity or the way it's moved. That would actually be hidden once it's put into place. It is all ADA compliant, and it does meet the recommended number of stalls and sinks that for the population that's in use at South Lawson. It includes the women's with a handicap unit, as well as in addition to two stalls and two sinks, the men's side would have one urinal, one handicap, and one stall with two sinks. Of course, the unit is HVAC, climate-controlled, and it includes, like I said, delivery, site prep installation, and the skirting to make it look nice. Internally, you can see the price for that is $129,795. And interiorly, it includes a number of upgrades that currently are not in existence in the units that the school system currently has. That includes Coralon commercial roll vinyl walls so that it can be easily hosed down. We think that we're in the commercial setting, and that's going to be a requirement. Reinforced wall fiberglass covering, upgraded auto flush and hardware units, and upgraded standard-brand vandalism-proof partitions. We have a similar type of partition at the pool that has fared very well over the last 20 years. They are very rugged, very hard fiberglass, and this was at the recommendation of the building and inspection's office. In addition to the placement of the unit, the other cost that you see next to the list here is the electrical and to bring electrical to the site, also to install meter with electrician, water and sewer. There is a sewer nearby, but we still need to pipe to the sewer, and then to install a water line to the area. We have also figured in some pricing to include automatic door locks, security lighting, and then we will likely have some leftover money, maybe even a little bit more than the $12,000 listed there, to connect sidewalks to the parking area, to the walking trail, and potentially to the playground area as to make it easily accessible for ADA areas. So with a grand total, when you figure just the modular unit itself is the $129,0795, but the project for all-in, we are estimating to come in around $163,000. That does put us within the appropriated amount, and we feel like that's a pretty good estimate to stand on. It is through a state purchasing opportunity that we are part of a conglomerate to be able to use, and our finance department has approved that operation if you all are willing to do so. This is just an aerial view to give you an idea of some of the things where we're proposing that the restroom would go. It would be, these that you see here are the handicap parking spaces that's at South Lawson Park, and this area right here is the turnaround. And this building, as best as you can angle with a computer and a graphic that's not to scale, would angle here with the opening, the doors facing the parking lot. We feel that facing the doors to the parking lot would be very important for security matters during both on and off hours. It would still have sidewalks with the ability to reach off the ramps that do come included as part of the price. And so currently, those facilities at the stadium do have an aluminum ramp on them. Depending on the distance that we have to go to reach the correct height, I don't know if they will be a twist-and-turn ramp, but they are measured and priced as such to meet what we need. So I am a little hesitant to draw in sidewalk paths at this point as to where they're going to be exactly on this map. You can see some of the other additions that we have added to improve South Lawson Park, one of which is the Lions Club has installed a playground, which is used pretty heavily. And originally, we started out with some picnic stuff that was here originally. That has now since not been needed because we've upgraded with this great picnic shelter that has come into practice over the last two years as well. And then, if you have a chance, a new basketball court is in process, and that's almost complete. We are nearly completed, and we think by the end of the week, you will see, we can bounce a ball there. So that's going to be great. So just as a reference, we put this map in here to kind of give you an overview of what we're talking about. And this is a floor plan of the actual unit. You can see that's 39 by 12, essentially. Here's your 39 across, 12 here. Here's your two doors. And you can see, we think that handicap is extremely important when moms have strollers to be able to get in and take little ones to the restroom. We have a number of children of the 300 kids that play soccer that are below eight, who usually need a restroom accompaniment, and they have siblings. So that is a pretty big, pretty big important part of it, as well as the ramp being able to accommodate the stroller and the width to get the swinging door open as well. These are just some basic images of some of the, what the interior may look like. You can see some of the reinforced doors. Of course, we would not have four sinks. Ours is not going to be that large, but you can see this is a unit here that has the two doors with the aluminum siding, aluminum ramp in conjunction, and then, of course, the HVAC unit on the side. It does have door-over-the-door lighting, but of course, we believe that a large security light near the park would be best to really help with a number of situations that we've encountered at other locations in regards to restrooms. So as you look at the unit, we certainly hope that this would be a way to keep our project in budget and would be a good solution to provide a project that we anticipate lasting between around 25 to 30 years for our investment. And we're happy to take any questions that you may have. Yes, Bud?
As far as floods, that's an area that does flood quite often in northeasters and especially hurricanes, okay? Will that be flood-resistant enough?
Well, currently, we believe that the elevation that needs to achieve is about four feet above what is there currently to meet the zone, and Ken has provided us information that this would suit.
Okay.
Gretchen, really good presentation, bud.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is it fair to say that the brick and mortar could possibly be twice or three times the cost of this modular unit?
I think that's a very fair statement. In fact, I think reasonably, a brick and mortar could run us in a very preliminary estimate, because as we started to do some of the required pieces to get us to a brick and mortar, prices were not stabilizing. And so we ended up with basic, very basic estimates that started in the $230,000 to $250,000. So that was a significant increase over the amount of money that we had allotted.
Aesthetically, to me, I think it looks fine.
And we have some options to choose as well. I mean, this is just a sample that our contract provider gave us as an example. I mean, these are used in a whole number of applications around the state to include James Madison University, different correctional facilities, a variety of, what do you call it, campgrounds and parks, and some of the more park, state-contracted, how should I say it, like kit buildings. A number of those were very apprehensive to provide us with a real stringent price due to the elevation requirement. So the price was not going to, they were willing to provide the unit, but not provide the site and the installation. So we were going to have to general contract it, which would then, in addition to the purchase of what you would see at, like, Chip Oak State Park or York River State Park's campground, that is a traditional standard stock bathroom, that would then include an additional price for installation and site work, and then an architect and drainage numbers. So that was driving the cost for a number of those components. And that kind of led us down this path.
Gretchen, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
Yep, I got some. As you know, I've spent a little time at South Lawson Park over the last seven years, not with any children playing, but with just looking at things like playgrounds and this structure. I remember sitting down with Tom Jones back in, I have the notes from 2019, talked about that. He said the elevation right now, at that point, is seven feet, so we need to go up another four to get to 11 feet for that, although he anticipated possibly the restriction going higher than that, so I can see why we'd have to go up. I've been to the football stadium on several occasions and watched games and matches. Never had to use the restroom, so I never saw it other than from a distance. So I went out and took a look at it the other day, and really nice-looking building. If it looks anything like that, this is a good thing. My concerns are, first on, where are you going to place it? I went down and looked when you had the area drawn out on the ground, and like the football stadium, it's back against the fence, out of the way that people go to it. I think this one should mirror that, rather than being right there at the handicap parking spots, just if you push it back a little like this, or face it, it would not be out of the way, it would not be that much further to that, and it would allow a straight shot for people that are just coming in and maybe going to the picnic area. So if that could happen, I think it would be a lot better aesthetics, especially as you come in and go around the loop for those that park in the handicap or just turn around instead of looking at a big building if it was just that way. And again, the police patrol would be able to see the doors on the one end, which would be good.
Right. We did a preliminary marking to assist with utilities, so that was, we still have not, like, dropped stakes at this point.
Okay, I understand.
The preliminary marking was to assist with the pricings so that they got a pretty good idea of how far they were going to have to move electrical and plumbing.
And you looked at a unisex option, like individual stall-type things?
So our advisory board had definitely wanted to consider that as a family situation. However, with this layout, we feel like this still does achieve the ability for privacy within the unit with the handicap, and I really think if we have the space, we're going to put a baby-changing table in both of them because that's just critical. And I think unisex would probably drive our cost. And when we did do the unisex in the actual, more like kit, particular building, where we did just four restrooms of family restrooms, it doubled the price.
I'm really glad you're looking at the ADA compliance. I couldn't help but notice, even though I looked through the fence at the restrooms at the football stadium, that while the ramps are great, the access to it is across grass, dirt, and that's, you know, we make an ADA-compliant building, but a non-ADA-compliant approach to it.
It's hard to get there, yeah. And that's why the sidewalk is not yet drawn in, because we need to make the best decision based on, once it's there, how we're going to configure the sidewalk.
Okay. My last thing is, if you remember Martha Chapazie, who was a student member on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for two years as a sophomore junior, I'm assuming now she's at college playing field hockey. She came to us, if you remember, one of our meetings, and when we asked her for input from students, what do they want to see at different places? She said basically one thing, a water cooler that had a bottle-filling option. If that can be incorporated, that I think will be great for the students, because right now, I don't think there's any kind of potable, whatever the word is, water there that would allow people to do it. It's been my experience of working down there while games are being played, that most of the little ones that are running around are playing the game, and mom and dad are watching that as much as possible. When we put in the playground, the swings, that was for the brother or sister that was not paying attention, we could have a chance for them to go out. But it's been my observation that they come in, they play their games, and then they leave, and then the next group of parents come in, and then they leave. It's not like football, where people hang out before the game, you know, halftime and stuff like that. And so because that, you know, a place to go and grab a glass of water rather than bringing one for everybody in the family or something like that would, I think, be beneficial to all.
I think that's a great suggestion, and if we can accommodate it with its plumbing, it would be a great place to stick it here. And if not, then it may be that we add a little, and this isn't the right term, but it's as close to the term as I think, a little vestibule or port-a-cachet on the backside that could potentially be a place where you could put a Coke machine or a water filler station, and then that way. We're a little apprehensive to put a drinking facility or water at playgrounds, based on our experience from some of the other locations that have really not served us well, and they really take a really large commercial load for usership, and it's hard to keep them working. They are out in the elements, and that does play into the wear and tear of the way they function. So we are putting to the test the first water bottle filler station at the pool this summer, and it's getting a workout, and we will see just how it withstands, if it can make a trek to South Lawson, because it is the more outdoor component that we've purchased over the last, what, seven to eight stations that they've installed. So it does have all the right drainage to make it work well, just perfectly, so it's doing well so far.
Or maybe even inside.
Yeah, exactly. And it is inside the gate, which does help a lot, but it is well-appreciated because it's actually cooling like a real water fountain. So we are required by the health department to have a water fountain at the pool, so this does double duty, and it's made a great improvement there. I'm like you, I think it's a great idea if we can come up with a way to make it function well and that we don't have to service it continually, because it would have to be something that would have to be winterized if we consider it.
You have questions? Anybody? Gretchen, Dave, thank you so much.
Long haul, gee.
Great job. Okay, anything else, Randy? Five minutes.
We could do one of those minutes, just to provide an update. We've already spoken to this, but the basketball court is well towards final completion. So if you haven't gone out to see it, please do. The walking path out there is under construction as well, and it's due to be finished up early to mid-August, so that's something that is also moving forward. And then earlier today, we opened bids for the parking lot, which is the first portion of the first phase of Two Tree Park. We did get four bidders, and we're in the process of evaluating those bidders, but early indications are that we got good bidders, and we will be able to afford it with the money that you have allocated. So we're getting some stuff done with your help, so thank you.
That's all, I guess.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
And we'll be back in only five minutes.
Okay. We are, we are ready to go. First of all, let me thank everybody for being here. We appreciate that. I haven't seen this many people at a council meeting in some time. So welcome. They call this meeting to order and the Vice Mayor will lead us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Pray with me. Gracious God, we praise you and thank you, our city, our state, and our nation. We ask you to be with us and guide us in our decisions tonight. Thus our first responders and our military, we ask in your name, amen.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item tonight is going to be a special presentation. I'm going to ask the Chief of Police if he would join me at the podium. Please, sir. Okay. Hey, how are you? Good to see you. Good. Good. All right, let's read this proclamation. And then the Chief and his officer with him will have some comments regarding that particular night, National Night Out. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August the 1st, 2023, entitled Nation, excuse me, National Night Out. Whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in the City of Pecosin to join over 38 million neighbors across 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more care places to live and work. And whereas neighbors of the, of the City of Pecosin assist the local law enforcement agency through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out 2023. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of the City of Pecosin come together with the police, work together to build a safer and a more caring community. And whereas it is, and now therefore, we, the City Council of Pecosin, do hereby call upon the neighbors of the City of Pecosin to join the Pecosin Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in support for National Night Out on Tuesday, August the 1st, 2023. Further, let it be resolved that we, the City Council of Pecosin, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, as National Night Out in the City of Pecosin. The Chief, it's a pleasure to present you with the proclamation. And you and Officer Gills have a podium.
Brief comments because I know we've got a long agenda tonight, but thank you, Council Mayor, for, for the proclamation. And I just want to take the opportunity to invite all of our citizens in Pecosin to join us on August the 1st, and it's 5:00 to 10:00?
Six to nine.
Six to nine. I get the, I got five, I got so many events going on, 5:00 to 10:00, but it's 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM in Municipal Park. And we have, we'll be having a lot of activities for young folks, old folks. We've got something for everybody and it's all thanks to the hard work of Officer Gills and her coworkers that are putting this thing together, as well as many of our citizens and businesses in the community that have financially supported this opportunity for us to get together and just have a good time and fellowship with one another on National Night Out and to, to bring awareness to the safety needs in our community and just to interact with one another. The entire Police Department's going to be there for the most part. And so we look forward to having you all come and join us for, for a night of fun and fellowship. Do you have anything you want to say?
No, it's going to be a fun time. We have free food. Kwanzaa is providing hot dogs and chips. American Legion will be there with the kettle corn popcorn. And who can say no to kettle corn popcorn? And we'll have cotton candy, bounce houses, music. So it's just going to be a really nice night. If anybody on council wants to be in the dunk tank, call me. I can add you to the lock roster. But yeah, that's all I have to say about it. It's going to be a fun time. Think 2019, that's how we're going to do it again this year.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Certainly encourage everybody in the city to, to join in with that Night Out. It's a, it's a big deal. It's a, it's a really good program. Thank you, Officer Gills. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Let's move on to our visitors. Got some slips here. It is at this time that folks in our audience can address council on any issue. And they've been numbered for me and the first one visitor is Cindy Elmore. Ms. Elmore?
Good evening. I'm Cindy Elmore and I grew up at 328 Hunts Neck Road, a home that my brother and sisters and I still own. I came here to state in the record that my siblings and I are baffled and dismayed by the city's litigation against us to take part of our property. My family has improved, maintained, and paid taxes on this land for nearly 60 years. Three of us are graduates of Pecosin High School and all four of us have loved this city and the memories we've made here, as did our parents before us. Yet, no one from the city will talk to us about why you feel the need to sue us over the ownership of our land. Land that our parents bought in 1967, whose, land whose boundaries are recorded in surveys and filed in the courthouse under two deeds, although your city attorney has not acknowledged the second of these two deeds, a deed he was notified about in writing in 2010. I came here tonight because other property owners in Pecosin should be forewarned. If we can be sued by the city where our family has paid taxes for 56 years, then maybe they aren't safe either. We really don't know. Because instead of contacting us in any normal conventional way, we were instead blindsided for the first time about this matter by a threatening summons in the mail in late December. And no one will talk to us or acknowledge our letters. That's why I'm here tonight. Since January, we've spent a small fortune on legal bills. And for what? We don't know. It honestly seems as if the goal all along has been to outspend us. Because sure enough, as soon as we notified our attorney that we could no longer afford to retain him, the city notified the courthouse to schedule a trial. So now, we're having to hire another attorney and we are having to turn to the only thing we have left, which is the court of public opinion. Honestly, this seems a bit shameful. And other city taxpayers should be aware that you are, without any warning or publicly stated purpose, suing people over whether or not they own their own land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. And Myra J. Elmore. Ms. Elmore?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. As you undoubtedly aware, the city's secrecy forced us to file a Virginia Public Records Act request, which provided documents making clear that one person, a neighbor on Hunts Neck Road, has clearly been instigating the city on this matter for the past 20 years. We find it interesting that one of his letters to the city states, in effect, that he would hate for his involvement to be quote-unquote "in the limelight." Much of the information he has provided to the city about the end of Hunts Neck Road isn't even accurate. Yet the city has not talked to the other residents. They apparently just assume that what he says is truthful and accurate. City records also indicate that the City Council apparently made this decision behind closed doors to challenge our ownership of our land back in September. But what the city wants to do with it, or why, remains a secret. You have not publicly discussed those plans since making this decision behind closed doors in September. How can the public participate in city decisions if they don't know about them before you take action? The public does not know what you plan to do at the end of Hunts Neck Road, other than to continue to list it as a kayak launching point, which is fine. But here's a thought. If you look at the city's GIS maps, there is undeveloped waterfront property in the Western District that could be much more suitable for kayaking than the, than in the mile-wide, very strong currents at the end of Hunts Neck Road. As just one instance, there's a parcel on pasture road that the city already took a chunk of to build a pump station. That could house plenty of parking with waterfront access. It is assessed at $175,000 and the city has been very successful at getting grants for such purposes. Many, many more people would be able to kayak on Lions Creek than could kayak at the end of Hunts Neck Road, which often requires Arnold Schwarzenegger-level strength against the currents. It is possible that people on pasture road wouldn't want city activities any more than the residents ought to do at the end of Hunts Neck Road. But at least buying land outright that is already vacant would be more honest than what you've been doing behind closed doors, trying to take people's yards away. Pasture Road is just one example. The point is, there are a lot of creative and more suitable alternatives, but it seems the city hasn't even looked at that. And you've been listening to only one city resident instead of all of those who are much more affected by the city's actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Gail?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Of course.
I'm Gail Enzley-Hagel and I live at 329 Hunts Neck Road. I would like to begin with a very brief history of the land from Edwards Road to the end of Hunts Neck Road. The land from Edwards Road to the north side beyond the circle at the end of the road was farmed by my great-great-grandfather. His name was James S. Hopkins in the late 1800s. He handed this farm down to his daughter and son-in-law, Mr. Leonard Levi Moore, Sr., in the early 1900s, where it was still farmed until his health declined in the late 1950s. I was blessed enough to be raised on a very small part of that family land and reside in part of that land now that was former farmland. Over the years, I've listened to the history of this land through my great-grandmother, Dodgy Hopkins-Moore, who I was blessed to spend many afternoons after school with, my grandmother, Ruth Moore-Wade, and my mother, Edith Wade Enzley, who is sitting in this room right now. Thankfully, she's been able to share many of these stories with me as well. There used to be a road, not maintained by the city, that often got flooded when there was a tide that was a little bit higher. My great-grandfather, Mr. Leonard Levi Moore, Sr., was an outstanding citizen of Pecosin, founding member of Emes Baptist Church, and served many years on the Pecosin School Board. Out of the goodness of his heart, he offered for the city to make a slight change in the road, moving it onto a better part of his land to avoid the part that flooded. That was done at the time. Later, when my mother, Edith Enzley, and her sister, Joyce Wade, were in grade school, my great-grandfather donated even more of his land so that the city could make a circle at the end of Hunts Neck Road so the school bus could turn around safely. Now, let me ask each one of you. Who do you know today that would donate land to the city? I can't think of anyone who would do such a thing. Well, now let me get to the current situation. Beginning with a closed-door meeting in September of 2022, the city began to pursue ownership of a parcel of land formerly owned by my ancestors that is now on the north side of the circle at the end of Hunts Neck Road. Yet my family deeded this parcel of land to the Elmore family in 2005, when we realized that it was still in our family's name, deed-wise, yet the Elmores had been maintaining it and taking care of it for many years. The actions of Mayor, City Manager, Council, and City Attorney Wayne Moore, including filing a lawsuit with the Elmore family, that is dishonoring to my family and our ancestors who graciously gave land to the city. It was never owned by the city and/or intended to be owned by the city. These actions are unjust to the Elmore family, to my family, as well as the rest of the taxpaying residents in this neighborhood. And for that matter, as the Elmores stated, to the other residents of the City of Pecosin. For the record, my father, Robert Mitchell Enzley, Jr., who served the city as a volunteer firefighter for 63 years, over 63 years, he passed away almost a year ago, July the 12th, 2022. Our family is sadly confident that the City Manager, Council, and Wayne Moore immediately decided to pursue this action as soon as he passed away. They all knew my dad was a fighter until the end. He knew his rights and the family history of this land. He has been down here many times, meeting with different people and phone calls to different people. Over the last 20 years, one of our neighbors has continually pursued wanting to make this more public in our residential neighborhood. Let me just state for the record that as long as I am alive, so too shall be part of my father will be living. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Appreciate you. Charlie?
You mentioned about a lot of people here. It's my first time since high school.
All right.
Unleash yourself. I'm here in support, but... Came here to ask the question if anyone on this council or the city is aware of video camera operating potentially 24/7, seven days a week, maybe taking pictures privately, secretly of our residential community. I can't tell you how wrong it is. If you know about it, maybe have any access to stop. Wrong on so many levels. Your wife, your family, friends' families, friends' wives, kids, you're taped. Once again, without knowingly, it's not a doorbell camera, it's not a walk-up, potentially continuous. What's going on with these videos? And it's ironic. It's the same house resident and person potentially that you're taking advice for. Based on emails I've seen, the language, I've been here 55 years. I have fish there. I have a oyster there, last tent or so, on Carol Drive. Never had a problem fishing, fortune to boat, kayak, cat marabou, I have to kayak itself three times a week. Never had a problem with other family. No oysters. We were respectful. We would park the trailer, maybe get back to the bayview. But when I take it back to the house, my brother, come back, pick me up. But never had a problem. Video camera, I'd say. Why would you like it? And for what? So he can have his ditch filled in by the city taxpayers? It's the same ditch that was there when he bought the property? It's the same road, same boat ramp access as when he bought his property? Nothing's changed. Road's the same way. Been doing it for years. It's all warm people walking with COVID that ever before, we walk it. We just wanted to slow down. We wish it was 25 after Edwards. It ought to be 25 after the S-turn was called. It ought to be 25 after the S-turn was called. To do this to a longstanding citizen, not once, twice, you've heard it now three times, it's just absurd for a great small community. For this to get out in the public. So, you know, look at the long-term plan, and it's funny, up to 2035, and I think in your objective, you talk about making the Pecosa a walking and biking community. Look what it did for Whitt Creek, no sidewalks years ago. Some people fought it, some people were against it. Look what it did. But you know what's ironic? There's not one mention in your budgeting plan, 12 different projects, access points, whatnot around the city, not one mention of a bike path, for Christ's sake, on either Little Florida or Pecosa Avenue, which we've talked for 20 years about, or even the sidewalk for walking. You want to fill in a ditch, fill one of those ditches in, pave over it, and you've got a bike path that goes to every school in this city, every youth sport, every parks and rec sport, every high school sport, and you have no access. It's like removing the library from the center of town the kids could get to across a major intersection of town with no access, except mom and dad and more cars of yours. So if anybody knows the answer to this first question, I should let them know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Ashley probably ruined this wire, will you? Close?
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ashley Wyon, and I live at 158 Cedar Road here in Pecosa. I'm who executed the petition for a speed limit change on Cedar Road. In a recent Facebook post in our neighborhood group, it was asking for everyone's opinions in regards to the speed limit, and everyone agreed that 30 miles per hour in a residential neighborhood is way too fast. It was also mentioned that all the side streets are 25 miles per hour. That's why even though I received some signatures from neighbors on these side streets, my main focus was specifically Cedar Road. Every house that I stopped at, Saturday and Sunday, 100% agreed. Mothers who walk their children on this road told me stories about them getting run off. Mr. Charles Moore, who rides his bike daily in our neighborhood, he's an elderly man, says it's pretty scary because not only is he a little frail, but cars just drive past him insanely too fast. Mr. Shackleford and his wife told us about crashes. Ms. Smith, who lives on the corner, has had to replace her mailbox nearly seven times within the last five years because of people slamming into it. The Flins at 138 Cedar Road shared stories of cars running into their yard, hitting fire extinguishers, and mentioning that they never let their children play out front. I live right at that corner on Cedar Road. I have two little boys who enjoy riding their bikes, their scooters on our driveway, but people are always flying by, as if there's a sign in my front yard that says, please accelerate, go faster, I want to see you go fast. We even put boulders on the corner of our yard, not just to protect our property, but to protect my children's bedrooms. We have video footage of cars slamming into a tree, multiple people crashing into this tree. Some of those people have replaced the mailboxes. Some of those people just drive off and they never see them again. Cars are constantly going into the oncoming lane. An Amazon driver even drove into my yard to avoid someone hitting them head-on. Currently, it's 30 miles per hour, which is concerning, seeing as the community pool is off of this road, the annual seafood festival, numerous bus stops where cars have slammed into that exact tree, little league fields, a park, children at play, elderly who walk, a public boat ramp, high school cross-country uses our neighborhood to practice in. And 95% of the residents' driveways are entering on the road. Not to mention, as the chief of police was just talking about, a fantastic event that's happening here in Pecosa is off of Cedar Road, made for families and children. You would want to ensure their safety, I hope. This turn is dangerous, and cars recklessly speeding through it endangers the lives of Pecosa residents. I can say, even though I did not receive 100% of the homeowner's signatures, 100% of the people I spoke to agreed that it needs to be 25 miles per hour. Again, it's a residential area with no outlet unless you jump in the river, and I highly doubt anyone is going to do that. There's just no reason for any car to be traveling at such a reckless speed of 30 miles per hour in a neighborhood. Cedar Road is only one of two roads in Pecosa that is 30 miles per hour, and it is the only residential road that is 30 miles per hour. Again, there is no outlet. It is a dead end. There is no reason for any car to be going that fast, and speed limits are intended to keep residents and drivers safe, and 30 miles per hour in a residential neighborhood at this location is doing the exact opposite. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Morse?
I am a resident, live, currently live at 203 Hunts Neck Road. My grandparent, my husband's grandparents owned two of the other properties that we currently own, so we own three of the properties. My daughter lives on a fourth property, my son lives on a fifth property, and my neighbor across the street asked me to represent him as well.
Ma'am, ma'am, excuse me. Could you put the mic up a little bit closer to your face? I had a hard time hearing the gentleman before y'all talking, and I just can't hear that well.
I can appreciate that. I lost my hearing last month overnight. Traffic on Hunts Neck Road is already very busy. It's 35 miles an hour, and people speed by. We don't have sidewalks. Children like to ride their bikes. Dr. Flynn still rides his bicycle every day up and down the road. There's no place to safely walk or ride a bike or get on the kid's scooter. So I fear that adding a boat landing or whatever you're thinking of doing at the end of the road on a very curvy road is not in the best interest of the community. I'm very concerned that without sidewalks, which we don't have, and we're not going to get it in the near future that I'm aware of, this proposal is not safe. I can't get into the details of what these other people are dealing with, taking land from them or feeling like they're being sued. I hate to think you'd take land, some of our land, but most importantly, it's the safety of our citizens. I don't think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, let's move on to our minutes on a regular session, June 12th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of regular session, June 12th, 2023.
All right. Second. All right, most may second. We adopt those minutes. Any concerns, comments? Any questions? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. We have one public hearing, issuance of up to $2 million of city precaution general obligation bonds for certain capital improvements presented. I doubt in for it. Dave, are you going to be?
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. While everyone is, I'll let you, okay?
Sure.
Does she have it back there?
Again, Mr. Mayor, once we get started, for all of you, I'm David Rose, and, oh.
Keep talking, keep talking.
I rarely have that happen to me. People tell me, keep talking. But again, it's a pleasure to be here. I know my colleague of 20 years now, Kyle Alex, who's been here far more frequently than I, but tonight I get that opportunity. We go back with some of you many, many years, and good to see you. Austin Sachs is our next Kyle, and Kyle's been mentoring him. He's been with us for a couple of years now, so really appreciate this opportunity. Jesse Bausch is to the right of Austin. Jesse is with Sands Anderson, and he will be available this evening to talk about the resolution and what we're asking this evening. With that said, I'll wait till, Tanya, you want me to keep going? Okay, I will keep going.
I'm trying to figure out where they put it in the file.
All right, we had it earlier.
Yeah, you had it. You did.
All right, so if I could, I know y'all have it in front of you, and I apologize to those in the audience, but on page two, a little bit of the background, we are and have good fortune of serving as financial advisor to the city of Pecosa, and I suspect probably go back about 30 years. So it's been a wonderful run. We really appreciate Tanya and Tara, and of course, City Manager Randy, and all the things that you've done. So as you can see there, back in the summer and fall of 2022, basically a year ago, we worked successfully on a $4 million issuance. This took care of some of the public safety facilities, you recall. Today, we're here talking about your approval for a ladder fire truck, and the amount that we are looking to fund is $2 million. And I would point out, and it says right there, this debt service is already factored into your 24 budget. I'm sorry.
You're fine. You keep going.
All righty. So if you go to the next page, on page three, we recommended to do a direct bank loan. We've done that with you before. The direct bank loan, I think, we're ready here, I think. Okay. All righty. Bear with me here. Okay. We recommended a direct bank loan, and the way we've typically done this is through a competitive process to look to banks and brokerages, not just in the region, but all over the country. And so basically, on June 29th, roughly a few weeks ago, we received the results of that process. And so I would point out, just on this page, though, the interest rate trends, while we are not at the absolute rock bottom, when we really look at it, when I started back in 1981, '82 timeframe, we are literally at 40-year lows. So we are very much at attractive rates, not at the absolute bottom of where we were a year or so ago, but nevertheless, a very positive environment. So what we did is we structured funding for this to make sure that it fit within the debt affordability, within the 24 budget. All of that has been satisfied. When we initially did this work with your staff, we made an interest rate assumption of 15 years at four and a half percent. We ended up, and you'll see in a moment, getting slightly under that. So good, we beat that. If you would, I want to talk about that. And we also wanted to lock that in, but also give us the opportunity to refinance down the road if interest rates go down or for whatever reason. So with all that said, we received six different banking responses, and I want to point out, from my experience working with local governments for all these years, when you have a relative modest size, it's important, I realize we don't take $2 million lightly in Pecosa, but in the greater scheme of all these banks and brokerages, $2 million is not that large an amount from their perspective because they have to do all their credit and due diligence. Nevertheless, to get six bids says a lot about the way they look at the city of Pecosa. What it says is they're very comfortable with Pecosa and feel very good about you coming through and paying for this over time, and your track record is impeccable, and as a result, you have the ratings to show for that. So ultimately, you'll notice here, we've highlighted Webster Bank, and we're going to recommend that the resolution allows for Webster Bank to be the chosen bank. And the reasons for that basically are a couple-fold. Number one, their interest rate was the lowest of all the interest rates provided. It was close, but they were the lowest of interest rates, and that is locked in through closing. The second thing is the prepayment options. Whole or part, we're locked out for the first four years. It's called a no-call, but right after that, we can refinance this. First couple of years after that is what we call a 1% penalty. So let's say whatever debt is outstanding at that time, let's say it's about a $1,008, then it would be an $18,000 penalty to prepay early. The only reason we would do that is, again, from a proactive standpoint, if it made sense to prepay it to save money for the city, or interest rates had come down, we have that ability, and then after year six, we can prepay it with no penalty. So that's the kind of flexibility we felt was very, very solid. So again, we like the rate, we like the flexibility, and again, we like the fact that it was competitive, and it was under the assumption that we made in doing the budget at 4.5%. So there's the rationale. I jumped ahead of it. Happy to say anything more about that. And then finally, here, you can see the debt service versus the estimate. Let me see if I can work down a little bit here. Okay. And so basically, by virtue of the difference in planning, as you can see there, we saved a couple hundred thousand dollars plus in terms of being more cost-effective. So you can see then, the overall debt service with this issuance layered in over 15 years. And again, the nice thing about where we are in Pecosa is in the next several years, our debt drops down nicely. That undoubtedly, we're going to have other projects, and so we purposely try to set this up and add this debt in such a way so that that drop-down does occur basically in about four to five years, by 2029. So lastly, here we are tonight. This is the public hearing for this issuance. We are asking you to approve that, approve the winning bidder, as we've called it, Webster Bank, and then we're going to work for the balance of July with Jesse and other folks to get this to closure. And as you can see there, let me lower it down a little bit, the closure would occur by July 25th. So with that, Mr. Wheeler, anyone else, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions. They told me to sit here for the thing.
Oh, you're fine, David. Thank you so much, man.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Just for the folks that are here, because this is not the first time we've talked about it, and I'm not sure it was clear to everyone in the room or watching what this is for. And the purpose of this financing is to purchase a new ladder truck for the fire department. Their existing ladder truck is beyond its useful life and showing it. And so this will set us up for a piece of equipment that will take us the next 20 to 25 years.
And to add to the city manager's point here, again, we've purposely, because you're in such a strong financial position, can amortize that over 15 years and be in a position that perhaps if there's going to be needed repairs and what have you, in that, let's say, the next five or 10 years after that, you'll no longer have any debt serves to pay on that. So I've got a 20-year-old car. I kind of, that's how I rationalize my Suburban is, you know, I don't have to, I don't, I'm not paying the car payments anymore. I'm just taking care of the improvements from all the things that go wrong, so.
Other questions, David?
Nope.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, let's hope the public hearing asks if there's anyone in our audience who would like to address a C sheet. Okay, let's move on to the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a general obligation bond.
Second. Second. All right, most may second. We adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments? Any questions regarding that? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Let's move on to our new business. First item is an ordinance mainly the code of the city of Pecosa, Virginia, making revisions to chapter 42 entitled Floodings.
Mr. Mayor, Ken Somerset will present for us. Ken is many things, whichever one you're comfortable with, Ken, doesn't matter. Ken is many things with us, and one of the things he is, is our certified floodplain manager, and he is here in that capacity this evening. and he is here in that capacity this evening. He's a really good one, too.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Ken?
I'm sorry, before you tonight is an ordinance amendment to our floodplain ordinance. It is to help us be in compliance with the state ordinance that we have now under the building code. State Virginia's building code has specific requirements for floodplain management and we're just trying to bring our city ordinance into compliance with that. We are already enforcing those items through the building code, we're just not doing it through city ordinance. Through the process of doing this, we will establish what is considered to be higher standards by FEMA's regulations. In doing higher standards, the city will end up with a better community rating system overall score, which will help us, help our citizens gain greater savings on their flood insurance premiums every year.
Okay. Any questions, Kim? Sounds pretty cut and dry to me. Okay. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. We do have an ordinance, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend an ordinance making the code of the city of Pecosa, Virginia, by making revisions to chapter 42 entitled Floods.
Okay.
I second.
All right, that's, we have motion made, second that we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments? Hearing ended, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Item two on the new business, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Box Modular to purchase South Lawson Park restroom.
Mr. Mayor, Tara's coming forward. She can answer detailed questions on the procurement, but this is the implementing action that follows the work session that you had at 6:30. If you have questions for Tara, I'm sure she would be happy to answer them.
All right, Tara?
Sure. Tonight for your consideration is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Box Modular to purchase the South Lawson restrooms. As presented at your work session tonight, the Parks and Rec Department determined that a modular restroom would be well-suited for South Lawson. And on September 27th, 2021, and through ordinance 1695, City Council appropriated 190,000 for permanent restrooms at the South Lawson Park. We did determine that the cooperative purchasing agreement with Box Modular issued by James Madison University is best to provide the modular restroom. And as Gretchen indicated earlier tonight, the modular unit would be 12-foot by 39-foot and the initial quote was 129,795 dollars. And in addition to purchasing this modular restroom, she went over that there would be additional costs, however, we believe that those would be projected within the overall project budget. So because of the authority that we have in our purchasing policy, this is over 100,000 dollars, which is why we're coming to you to ask for permission to have the city manager enter into a contract with Box Modular. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or Gretchen and Dave are still here to answer any questions as well.
All right, Tara, thank you very much, well done. By the way, is your question? Just went through a work session, I didn't hear any objections there.
No.
Okay, thank you, Tara. Someone prepare with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Box Modular to purchase South Lawson Park restrooms.
All right, sir, thank you.
Second.
Motion made, second we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments, any questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Aye, sir. Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Item number three, under new business and ordinance, making additional appropriations for FY 2023, a general fund, Virginia Marine Resource Commission grant. Randy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, John Anderson, our Public Works Director is coming forward. He's been our point person on this item.
How you doing, John?
Good, how are you?
Good, fine.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Virginia Marine Resources Commission, VMRC, established the abandoned or derelict vessel grant program to provide funds to local governments for the removal of abandoned or derelict vessels from the public tidal waters of the state. The Public Works Department submitted an application for the funding of 16,530 dollars based on a quote from a contractor for this type of work to contractually remove and dispose of two of these vessels in the waterways adjacent to Messick Point. These vessels have been abandoned and capsized for several years and are in need of removal. The VMRC, I'm happy to report, approved this grant application at their June 27th commission meeting and these funds have been received by the city. So we're now seeking approval to authorize the city to accept these grant funds and to appropriate these funds to have these abandoned vessels contractually removed. So the vessels will be posted with a notice that they can be removed based on our ordinance within the city's zoning code. We'll then have the contractor proceed with the removal and disposal. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of John?
Have any idea who the owner was, assuming that's not the owner now?
I do not have any idea.
There's no VIN number on a boat, I guess.
One of the two boats has been there for at least 15 years and the other has been here for many years. And the court did take some action, but with regard to the more recent, however, that gentleman has not moved it and VMRC is not inclined to take any more action. So this is the best way to get it removed from our waterway.
Okay, other questions, John? Thanks, sir. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance making additional appropriations for the FY 2023 general fund, Virginia Marine Resources Commission grant.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made, second we adopt the ordinance. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
I think it's a good thing, yes, but they've been there a long time and people have complained for ages.
We'll be doing it after this, son, okay? All right, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, Kim, John, while you're here, did you, while you're here, you tell your folks out there what a great job they're doing on the streets and those fields around this city are immaculate. They're immaculate. And so please pass on council's appreciation for that. All right, item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager enter into a contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for body-worn cameras. Tara?
Hey, this is another consideration to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Axon Enterprise Inc. for body-worn cameras. On September 14th, 2020, City Council authorized the purchase of body-worn cameras through the sole source provider, Axon Enterprise. At that time, the city entered into a five-year contract totaling 139,750 dollars, which provided the cameras and support. Since that time, the police department has grown and requires additional cameras. Therefore, the police department would like to cancel the remaining two years on this contract and enter into a new five-year contract because it's more cost-effective to do that. The contract amount is broken out over five years with the first payment in September 2023 totaling 28,650 dollars, which is available in the police department's FY 24 general fund budgets. The remaining four years have equal payments of 38,553 dollars for a grand total for the five-year contract of 182,862. The remaining four years of the contract would be included in future recommended budgets in the police department's general fund. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. You've had the resolution authorizing us to enter into this contract. The amount for each year is 30,000 or 40,000, but the cumulative effect is over 100,000, which is why we're asking for your permission to do so.
This gives all of our officers a camera. Okay. Okay, thank you, Tara, appreciate it.
I was going to ask chief, does this mean we get additional cameras for the new hires? And/or does everybody get a new one?
Yes, sir, so the, with, council recall, the addition of two more school resource officers and also with the approval of the FY 24 budget, there were additional three positions authorized in that year. And so the additional cameras will cover those additional positions, plus give us a couple of spare cameras in the event of a failure, we'll have one available to be used while repairs are made.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, chief. All right, let's move on to adoption of the resolution, please.
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Axon Enterprises for body-worn cameras.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made, second we adopt the resolution. Any questions, any concerns, any other comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Item five is an ordinance, make additional appropriations for FY 2024 for the special revenue fund, Oxford Mews Drainage, and authorize the city manager enter into a contract.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Garrett Figgins from our engineering department is here to present this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, council, before you tonight is a resolution, or an ordinance, author, or transferring 88,725 dollars from the roadway drainage project to the Oxford Mews Drainage Project and using that money also allowing the city manager to enter into agreement with Jay Sanders Construction for the construction of the Oxford Mews Drainage Project. And this will allow both projects to move forward and I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, well done, any questions?
No. Well, written letter.
Any questions? Okay, all right, my man, thank you, appreciate it. You got a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance making additional appropriations for FY 2024 for the special revenue fund, Oxford Mews Drainage, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Motion made, second we adopt the ordinance. Any other questions, any concerns? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager enter into a contract to purchase two generators for the public safety building.
Tanya O'Connell will present for us.
Okay, she is?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to present. I'm excited to bring to you tonight the opportunity for us to purchase two generators for our public safety building. As you're aware, we're getting ready to go out for bid. We have finalized the specs, so we plan on this week issuing the IFB to allow for the public safety building to issue. What we have determined, it's going to take 16 months to build the building itself, construct itself, but it's going to take probably even longer to get the generators. Therefore, we have determined both with our architect, with our construction manager, with our engineering department, as well as our utility department who oversees the building facilities, that it would be best to go ahead and purchase the units ourself and go ahead and get them on-site quicker so we can continue the process, not slowing down. So due to the fact that purchasing the generators are over the threshold that the city managers has, we brought a resolution presenting it to you. So we're purchasing two. One will actually operate the full building and the second one will operate the EOC building as it exists. So happy to answer any questions, but we'd like to authorize to enter into a source well, which is a cooperative, similar to like the JMU one for the modular and similar to other things that we've done before.
Tanya, thank you, well done. Any questions of Tanya?
That unit similar to the one that's outside here?
It's similar, correct. We try to make sure all our units are similar to therefore, now the only difference is it's going to be gas run.
Oh, okay.
Right now, this is a diesel, so therefore we have to fill it up, so we're making sure in the future we're gas running and actual resources.
Sure, cool.
All right, okay, Tanya, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, need a motion for the resolution, please?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contract to purchase two generators for the public safety building.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made, second we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments regarding the item? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Let's move on to item seven, it's an ordinance to amend the city code by omitting, excuse me, omitting Cedar Road from Article 4, Section 78, 102 dash, dash, speed limits on specific streets. Mr. Vice Mayor, you want to take that one?
Well, yes, this is, we're talking about Cedar Road and reducing the speed limit on Cedar from 30 to 25. I've had people approaching me for the last, oh, roughly a year and a half, asking for that to be done. Several of them I have contacted, Councilwoman Emmett as well, and Ms. Wine, who spoke earlier, walked around a petition. I had, she had come to me and asked how to do it and I told her that what we had done in the past is that there's no requirement for a petition or a certain number of names, but that it makes it a much stronger case to have a petition. So she walked around for the last few days and gathered up right at 100 names from residents on Cedar and the adjoining streets that Cedar's a dead end, so streets that come off Cedar have to travel Cedar to get back and forth from home. So the adjoining streets. And so our proposal is to change the speed limit on Cedar to, from 30 to 25. And both Councilwoman Emmett and I, in the eastern region, agree that this is a good idea and the residents that have approached us and talked to us more than the 100 is signed, but they agree it's a good idea as well.
Okay.
I just want to clarify for the public, just the nuance here, the resolution to omit, the reason being that 78-101 of the city code sets a general speed limit for all streets that are not otherwise listed as 25 miles an hour. Cedar Road in its entirety is listed under 78-102 and has a specific speed limit of 30. So by removing it from that section, it will become like the vast majority of all our other seats in default to the 25 standard.
Okay.
Driving down Cedar, West Lane Way is 25, it's a street that's a joint Cedar, then on down Riverview, Lakeview and Canal are also Cedar as well, I mean 25, as well as lanes going off of Cedar. So most of it is already 25 anyhow. And we've done, I say we, the police set up their radar machine that with the big speed line, your speed is such sign and it records the number of vehicles and the traffic that goes by. And average speed on that from two different times in different places was around 28 or 90-something percent of the people were 28 or less. So it's something that the people generally already do anyhow, but we make it legal to do this.
Okay, Carrie, thank you. I, let me, let me spend a discussion today regarding this amongst all of us. I don't have an issue with reducing the speed limit. I do have an issue with the way we want about doing it and I'll tell you why. And I've, I think I've talked to everybody today about this. And for you to get a petition, take it around in the heat, I think it's a great thing and I think you did the right thing. My issue is that there are 209 homes, not counting Poplar, excuse me, Forest Street and the Woman's Club. There are 209 homes. So if you take, if you do the math, and I had to have somebody do it for me, 43% of the folks down there agree that it's, we should reduce the speed limit. So we got 57 people of 57 residents that haven't told us anything about how we go about. how we go about, if they want this changed or they don't. I think we ought to have a procedure, and I don't think it ought to be a procedure that takes months and months and months to do. And, and I guess our point was made just a few minutes ago with Ms. Morse. She, she told us about Huntsknecht Road. That's going to be the next one. And we still don't have a procedure. So, if we're going to do it on, if we're going to do it on Cedar Road, where my mother lived for a lot of years, if we're going to do it on Cedar Road through this method, then we need to be prepared to do this for every street that comes in here. Otherwise, we're foolish, I think, to set up a procedure and not follow it. And the next one, again, the next one's going to be Huntsknecht Road. I don't have an issue with twenty-five miles an hour. I don't. I do have an issue with the way we're going about doing it. And that's, that's pretty much all I'm going to say about it. But that's, you know, I, if you look at the petition, and believe me, I, I've done, I don't know how many times I've done one of these. And if you, you know, not to take away from what you, what you did, because I think it's great, but, you know, here's four people in one house that signed the petition. There's another place on here where there were six people in one house that signed the petition. And so, I don't, I just don't think that the other fifty-seven percent have had an opportunity to speak. What I did today in talking with another, a member of council who's not with us anymore, one of the last ones that this council did was Rens Road, and it should have been done. They did, they did a petition, and I don't know where this figure came from, seventy percent. I don't know where it came from. But I talked with, with a former member of council who lives on that road, who worked on the petitions, and they had a hundred percent, almost a hundred percent with regard to the people that signed it that live on Rens Road and White House Cove, almost a hundred percent. And so, this one just doesn't get there. So, what, what does that mean to this council? Do we, do we have somebody get more signatures? Or do we ask the staff to do a procedure quickly so that we can get that, get that changed for you? I don't, I don't have an issue moving it down, I don't. But without a procedure, we're just going to keep going and doing them without a lot of input.
Mr. Mayor, our procedure in the past has been, I think I've done at least four, I've been on council when four or five speed limits were changed. And what we have done is the residents come to us, I don't believe on, on legends, we did a petition. I don't believe on pasture we did a petition. People complained about it being narrow and ditches on pasture, and we, as a council, agreed that, okay, we agree with you, that's what we'll do. I agree the procedure would be a good thing, but I don't think that we need to backdate it and hold this one up for a procedure. I'd be, you know, very willing to work with anybody and develop, you know, or help develop a speed limit procedure. But I'd, I think we should start that next week, not backdate it to, you know, because Ms. Rens, Ms. Wine acted on good advice.
She did, she did. Absolutely did.
I went to Randy, talked to you.
Yes.
There's no procedure for numbers or anything.
That's correct.
And she acted on good advice from her council person on the existing procedure. And I think we should go ahead with this and vote it either up or down.
Well, I'm not, I want to move on the lowering of the speed limit, but what I'm questioning is the way that we're going about doing it. I'm not worried about backdating anything. The minute we say yes tonight, the next meeting, we'll have Huntsknecht Road, they want that changed, and I don't have an issue with it. At least we'll have something that we can, you know, we'll have a procedure that we can work by. Right now, we don't. Ms. Wine, let me just ask you, does, does thirty days, does that cause you some issue?
It doesn't cause me an issue, but like Mr. Freeman was saying, I did exactly what was asked of me, and I don't think I, you should use our case as a, oh, well, we should develop a procedure, use this case to develop a procedure to move forward. Why not, I mean, I did what I was asked to do.
You did fine.
And, you know, I, I, I'm not sure if you're, are there more than two-hundred homes on Cedar Road that you're referencing, or off streets as well? I wasn't sure, I wasn't clear of that, if you were including like malls and parks and whatnot?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm sure they would not care at all.
And I, if I were betting man, I would agree with you. If I was a betting man, I'd say that they, they would gladly say, let's reduce it to twenty-five.
Oh, of course they would, but I'm saying they're not, the people's signatures I got are the ones who are directly affected, the ones that are on Cedar Road, the ones that are.
I understand.
People crash into trees, drive into their ditches. Again, it's one of two thirty mile per hour streets, and it's a dead end. It's a neighborhood. There isn't sidewalks. We do have a public bus ramp, and like we're mentioning, unfortunately, Huntsknecht would probably be here at some time if that goes forward, and they'll going to want to reduce it as well. I completely understand all of that, but I don't think my case should be used as a turning point. Like, I came here, I did what I was asked of, it's not my, you know, fault necessarily that there was no official procedure.
This is not something that I've had. I've not had this until tonight, when I got here. So, I don't know what the questions were that, that were asked, it just says, you know, it's got a proposal to change speed limit on Cedar Road. And again, I don't have any problem with doing that, but I think we need a procedure to do it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to. Mr. Mayor, could I suggest that we divide this up? We vote on the speed limit procedure and then vote on, we will not accept another request for speed limit until we get a procedure established and then put a date on it?
Well, I, I would like to make a comment. I see two things that are right, okay? I think we need to have a procedure for future reference, because if, if you're going to do something that's significant change in a speed limit on a road, all the people who are impacted should be informed about that, okay? And, and the other thing that I believe is right is that we should go ahead and pass Cedar Road, okay? And I'm going to tell you why, okay? Cedar Road is a thirty mile an hour speed limit, okay? More especially on the east side of Cedar Road, okay? As you, as you go east, you approach a ninety degree turn that is extremely sharp with an extremely short radius. That's followed by an S-turn, which is followed by two more ninety degree turns, okay? I'm going to tell you that if, if two cars come to, meet, come to those intersections at the same time, the two ninety degree turns cannot be completed greater than five to ten miles an hour. No, no faster than five to ten miles an hour. The S-turn can't be completed no more than twenty-five miles an hour. My count is that there are at least six roads feeding off of Cedar Road, all of them have twenty-five mile an hour speed limits. Now, changing five miles an hour on Cedar Road, okay, doesn't sound like a big difference, okay? But I can tell you that in, in my previous professional career, I've had to compute stopping distance, okay? It's a part that every professional pilot has to do. Carrie knows that, Keith knows that. And we know that if you change the, the speed of your aircraft or car, okay, by twenty percent and five miles an hour is twenty percent of twenty, of twenty-five, okay? If you change your speed by twenty percent, you reduce the stopping distance forty percent, the square of that. So, if I change in five, going from twenty-five to thirty to twenty-five miles an hour, you shorten the stopping distance by forty percent. That's almost half. Now, for people who live down there, they know those two ninety degree turns exist. They also know that the S-turn exists. But for people who don't know Cedar Road on a wet rainy night, especially in the wintertime, as they approach especially that first ninety degree turn, but there's already been several accidents, okay? As they come out of a fall or heavy rain, they see that S-turn changing the stopping distance almost by half, because you changed it five miles an hour, okay? Might make the difference whether you have the accident and hit the trees like it's already been, been an example, or you don't hit those trees, okay? We also know as a city that on Cedar Road and Little Florida Road, we've had many accidents there, several of them have been very serious, right? And you're right, okay? Residents ought to be aware, and where we can inform all the residents of a speed limit change, I believe that we should. You're exactly right on that, Mr. Mayor. We should, okay? But just because we can doesn't mean we should. On an outside example, if everybody on Little Florida Road decided they wanted it to be twenty-five miles an hour, we probably wouldn't do that.
I know.
I think it would disrupt traffic a significant amount. Same thing on Whist Creek Road. You wouldn't do that either, okay? But I think you're right, I think we do need a procedure, but in this case, whether you had a procedure or not, okay, it's, it's something that should be done. Cedar Road should not be thirty, it should be twenty-five.
I don't disagree with what you're telling me, and I'm impressed with all your figures. I'm just telling you that this was not given to this council until today, tonight, and I know that there's been discussion about this item for Cedar Road. I talked to the vice mayor about a month ago, we had a conversation about this, probably a month ago. I've had the conversation with everybody on this council today, and they've gone from this position to that position. I've had a member of council that has just got through speaking, that told me this afternoon that if a motion was made here to put a procedure ahead of changing this tonight, that they would support it. That's not the case five minutes ago. That's not what just happened. And, and, and let me say this while I'm talking about it, we, I've been through this once before. As much time as I spend, and no one here can dispute it, nobody on this council can dispute it, of being brought up to speed and knowing every, every inch of what we're going to discuss in these council meetings, nobody's going lacking with that information. But when you, when you show me a, a, one of these, I've got it today, that's when I got it, that's when I got the email, this afternoon, I don't know, four o'clock, four thirty. Whatever time you sent it. And we, we already have these votes lined up. And my back was vulnerable, and that's not the way this is supposed to be. That's not how this council is supposed to work. This happened not very long ago. It happened not very long ago, and I said then, if that's what I got to serve with, I'm not interested. I'm not interested. So, that's all I've got to say about the issue. I agree with you a hundred percent, that we ought to lower that speed limit, but I think we ought to have a procedure. And again, we don't have a procedure, forget the procedure. Let Huntsknecht Road come in at our next meeting, let's, let's reduce the speed limit, or any other street in the city, whatever they want, let's just do it. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Gordon, if I can share my thoughts, please? I, I agree with your perspective, and I want to make this crystal clear.
I absolutely can support lowering the speed limit on Cedar Road. Very much in favor of the bill of duty, for you are elected to represent all the people, people that share their concerns and their feelings. So, as Gordon stated, I got my position late this afternoon. So, I read my council pack in, after this meeting, over the weekend, I was not aware of that this board was being presented for us. I spent the day on the hell of it, talking to staff and talking with my fellow council members, maybe the best possible decision. We have no process, procedure at this time dealing with such matters. I've been informed on how things were done prior to my service on council, which goes back six and a half years.
I do not have a stake in what was done before, but I, I do not believe that we should do things in a haphazard manner. Therefore, I think we need to have a procedure in place that is researched, so we can make the best possible decision. So, based on that, I move that we postpone this ordinance until the first meeting in August of 2023, and provide staff with a direction to develop and bring us a procedure so we can deal with this in a methodical manner based on logic and research. And along with that, I will also offer my services to assist staff, not that they need it, they're entirely capable, but I will make myself available, and I, I will be glad to assist staff if they choose to take me up on that.
Sounds like you've got a motion coming somewhere, but let me, let me ask the manager something.
Yes, sir.
How long would it take? For instance, can we do it in two weeks? Could we have a procedure in place in two weeks?
If you decided to have a second.
Special meeting.
Yes, sir.
We can call that, right?
Yes, sir.
So, if we say we want it in two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Want our procedure in two weeks, and we want to reflect Cedar Road is reducing that, using that as an example in two weeks, and I don't mind calling a, a special meeting to do that.
I mean, ultimately, it's not my decision, but I mean, I, I would, if anything, to move in a better direction, I'm sure the entire residents of Cedar Road would appreciate it. And whatever I need to do or to help get more signatures or...
I, I don't, I, what I envision is in a two-week period, to have a procedure in place in favor of Cedar Road. And any other thirty mile an hour area that's going to, they're going, they're going to be here, and, and they know more about what's going on down their road than I do. My mother lived there for fifteen, sixteen years, and towards the end of Cedar Road. So, I'm, I'm familiar with the traffic, and yeah, you do, you've got people that just, you know, they're determined they're going to drive over the speed limit. You know, I've caused my yard all the time, believe it or not. When they leave school and they come by my house, they want to come in my yard for some reason. Would the assistant council change that speed limit to thirty miles an hour? That, and I think, but it on that, you know, be foolish, it wouldn't be practical. So...
Mr. Mayor, not to cut you off.
I'm sorry.
I believe that the motion on the floor that has not been seconded, I believe you need to ask if there's a second.
And then talk about it.
Well, I don't think you can talk about it. It's a motion to postpone it, which then would have to have immediate action.
Okay, let me, let me just, let me just ask if you want to restate your motion?
Yes, sir. Based on the, the guidance that you just suggested, I would like to amend my motion to postpone this ordinance until the special meeting that will be called later in, during the month of July 2023, and provide staff with direction to bring us a procedure to deal with the reduction of speed limits, and still offer my assistance if, if need be, to support staff in that development.
Okay. Okay. I, I got it. And we'll see if there's a second.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion made second.
All the questions, the motion, I open the discussion.
All right. All right, thank you, Wayne. Kim?
Councilman Fai?
Thanks. Motion is for the two-week postponement. Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
No.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
No.
Councilman Southall? Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to two.
All right, thanks, Kim. Let's go on. Okay, item eight is a resolution making appointments to the planning commission. Does someone?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that the following person be appointed to the planning commission for the term indicated. That name is Jonathan Hirsch for a term that expires January thirty-first of 2024.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Second.
All right, motion made second, we adopt the resolution with Jonathan Hirsch name inserted. Any concerns, comments regarding that? If not, Kim, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All righty. Let's go on to item nine, resolution making appointment to the Whitlins Board. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution making appointments to the Whitlins Board with the name Earl Nance at large, and the term runs till August thirty-first, 2024.
All right, sir, thank you. All right, wait a minute, did I hear a second? Okay, motion made second. Did we adopt that ordinance, excuse me, that resolution with that Earl Nance's name inserted? that Earl Nance's name inserted. I don't hear any questions or comments, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Did you have some comments that you'd need to make?
It's on the agenda in case she had something.
Okay, we don't, all right? Okay, good. Comments, are you here?
I am here, thank you. Only one item. This evening, I just wanted to remind you and to make sure the public is aware that the, the June Spark in the Park event that we unfortunately had to postpone because of several days of rain has been rescheduled for the evening of Friday, July twenty-eighth in Municipal Park from five to ten P.M. That's all I have.
Okay, all right, Dave, anything?
All the comments.
Okay, Davey?
I would like to welcome, um, to the positions, and also Earl Nance to the wetlands board, and again, to encourage everyone to go to the website, see what positions we have, something that you, you know, passionate about, or that is, has your interest, and it might citizens to look at that and apply and become more involved.
All right, thank you. Pete?
Yes, even though we may be back in two weeks, never too early to announce the food bank, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of July, volunteers can show up about eight-thirty, help us unload, get things ready for the recipients. Be at the municipal building, and the American Legion will be the host or guest people here. And the second thing I got is a happy anniversary to my wife, who's at home right now, probably binge-watching city council reruns.
All right, great, yeah, happy anniversary. Bud?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone who came here tonight, to pay, to pay attention to the city government for being here. It's very important that you do that, and you should continue to do that, encourage your neighbors to do that. I'd also like to thank everyone at home who paid attention to the city council meeting, it's part of their civic duty, and it helps us do our job correctly. Thank you very much.
All right, Angie?
I'd also like to thank everyone who came out today, and especially those who spoke up today. I think we all take, take the comments to heart, so, so thank you. It's not easy to go up and stand up there. Also, welcome to Jonathan Hirsch to the planning commission, Mr. Nance to the wetlands board, and just the last weekend in July is going to be great, we're going to have the Spark in the Park in National Night Out, so that's going to be a great weekend for the city.
It is, you're right. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Just one thing on the presentation about going out to banks to get loans, and the fact that we get six in at a very low rate, just further implicates that what a good job the city manager is doing and running the city.
Absolutely. I, I share that. That's all. I don't have anything, so we, have a motion adjourned?
So, Mr. Mayor.
All right, all right, we have a motion made second, we adjourn, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am, and we are adjourned.